It's 9:31. I hereby call this work session to order and we're going to jump right into public comment.
Madam Mayor, we have two people signed up to speak. The first person is Lois Biedemeyer. Biedemeyer?
Yeah. Good morning, Council. My name is Lois Biedemeyer. I live in the Marx. I'm here to speak about short-term rentals. First of all, let me say that I am open to the guidelines and I have done everything to hold my ground in protecting my property rights and privacy. While recent progress has been made, the Council still puts themselves above the Georgia law and the US Constitution. But I will ask one more time to delay the decision and allow both parties to meet and to compromise ethically and morally, whereas Morgan County versus May in 1918 has set precedent of property rights protected by the Georgia Supreme Court regarding grandfather laws. And the city attorney has publicly stated whoever is doing the Airbnb thing now probably have grandfathered rights to keep on doing it. And we stand here to protect those rights and to continue to protect them. I feel given one more chance, we can come to a compromise on some of the major issues in a way that serves and maintains given rights that work in the interests of the community and continue to bring tax revenue and economic benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next person to speak is Catherine Hinson.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hinson and I live on Five Acres in Peachtree City.
Catherine, come right up to the microphone.
You can bend it down. There you go.
Now we can hear you.
I live on Five Acres in Peachtree City with a R-43 zone where we can have backyard chickens. We are so excited that you're thinking about that. We have many people walk past our property and say they wish that they could have backyard chickens also. So I have a few reasons why backyard chickens would be a benefit to Peachtree City. First, local, sustainable, fresh eggs. Sustainability is such a hot topic today. Many of the younger generation would be attracted to a city where backyard chickens and gardens are allowed and encouraged. Chemical-free bug control. Before we had chickens, we had a black widow problem in our yard and now we don't see those nasty spiders. Chickens and ducks eat spiders, ticks, mosquitoes, fleas, and flies. And with the large deer population in Peachtree City, chickens are a natural way to control ticks. Nitrogen-rich fertilizer. Our chickens free-range and fertilize our yard. There is no smell. When I clean the coop, I add the droppings to our composter. Chickens and ducks are easy pets. We feed them our bread and our fruit scraps and so that reduces our trash. Chickens and ducks make very little noise and are so much quieter than dogs. They are truly productive pets and could be regulated as similar to any other pet. So I've looked at the planning commission recommendations and discussion and these are the changes I would suggest. Please allow chickens and ducks. We have Indian runner ducks and chickens and the ducks are quiet. They're a delight to watch and they make these creamy, large eggs. Allow more chickens and ducks per lot size. I would say like a four, six, and eight. Please don't require a permit. Permits mean more government intrusion into our citizens' lives. Permits are not required for other animals or unlivable structures. Allow chickens and ducks to free-range in a fenced-in backyard. A coop would still be needed, but this eliminates the smell potential because the waste isn't in one place and it keeps the chickens and ducks quieter as they're busy and exhausted looking for bugs. R-43 zoning allows poultry, so please don't add restrictions to these few properties. We like our zoning the way it is. I would encourage you not only to allow chickens, but to celebrate it. Our beloved sustainable paths fit in with the concept of sustainable backyard gardens and chickens and ducks. Imagine a farmer's market where entrepreneurs sell chicken tractors and baby chicks. Sustainable is one of the five pillars of Peachtree City. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Work session discussion items. A, deer management plan.
Yeah, this is Emily. We have a representative from the Department of Natural Resources here to give you all a presentation about deer management.
Welcome. Thanks for doing this.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Emily Raypack and I'm a biologist with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. I'm with our urban wildlife program, so I cover the nine counties around Atlanta. And the number-one call we get is about deer. So in about the late 90s, mid 90s, we had about 1.4 million deer in the state and we brought that number down to about a million deer statewide, which, you know, if we look at that as a state level, it's all right. But when we look at our urban areas, we really see that we get, you know, high density of deer in these area. And, you know, a lot of people, they're saying, you know, the deer were here first or, you know, we're building so they have nowhere else to go. But the reality is deer actually want to be in our urban environments. So if you think about it, there's traditionally a lack of hunting, which is a lack of population control. You know, our current predators, we're really looking at coyotes, bobcats, bears, and then domestic dogs. And none of those animals are, you know, taking fawns at a number that's truly managing that population, especially in urban areas. And then urban habitat is great for deer. So if you think about it, we put out our landscaping, deer come, mow it down. What do we do? We replant. So we're creating an endless buffet for them. And so when we are talking about, you know, carrying capacity, looking at abundance of deer, there are kind of three things we look at. So the first is going to be biological carrying capacity. So really that means how many deer can the landscape support that are going to be healthy? So when we exceed that carrying capacity, we start to see, you know, malnutrition in our deer, reduced fertility, maybe an excess parasite load. And then the next thing we look at is ecological carrying capacity. So when we have too many deer on the landscape, we start to see damage to the environment. So as you can see in that photo on the right, that's what we call a browse line. So deer, they'll eat pretty much everything they can reach, so about five, six feet up and below. There's just nothing there. And so when we have overbrows from deer, we're actually reducing our native plant cover and we're increasing the amount of invasive species on the landscape. In addition to that, you know, reducing that plant understory is actually removing cover that's necessary for our songbirds and other wildlife that uses that area. And that photo on the right is actually from Huddleston Park in Peachtree City. So you can kind of see a browse line in that photo where, you know, we have greenery up top and then about chest high and below. You know, there's just really nothing on the ground. And then perhaps the most important is going to be social caring capacity. So this is going to be the amount of deer conflict that the public deems unacceptable. So that can be a variety of things. It can be, you know, having deer in your neighborhood. They're eating your landscaping. It can be more serious where we have, you know, in the summer, does trying to stomp dogs to protect their fawns. They can be, you know, chasing people if they get fed, become very habituated. And then the biggest aspect is public safety with deer vehicle collisions. And so when we talk about deer management, we have our traditional non-lethal methods. So that's going to be things like putting up fencing to keep them off your garden, using, you know, a water scarecrow or something to try and scare them out of the yard. But we've really found that in these urban environments, when we have such a high density of deer and there's already such a problem, those methods really don't work and they fail to address the root of the problem, which is overabundance in these urban areas. So then we look at lethal control, which is typically through hunting. But there's also another method. It's to use the USDA's Wildlife Services. They have a cold program and they'll come in at night with sharpshooters and remove deer. But I do have some slides on hunting that I'm going to focus in on. But I do want to touch on, we get asked a lot about fertility control and relocating deer. Currently, neither of those are legal options in the state. So fertility control, you know, nothing's really approved by the FDA for use in Georgia. There's a lot of additional problems with it and moral of the story is it really doesn't work as well as people think it does. Relocating deer is illegal because of disease risks with moving an animal to a different population, as well as deer are really high stress. So studies have found upwards of 85% of relocated deer die. So it's really not a humane option either. And so when we talk about urban archery hunting, how that's going to work is a hunter is going to shoot from an elevated position like a tree stand, which means they're shooting downwards and the ground acts as a natural backstop for those arrows. So it eliminates any risk of a stray arrow. Those archers are shooting at closer distances, so typically 20 yards, 25 yards. So there's no risk of them misidentifying a deer. And then I also like to touch on the Georgia Recreational Property Act, which essentially covers landowners who allow recreation without cost on their property from civil liability. Archery hunting is extremely safe, so there are no reports of other people being injured by an archery hunter in the state of Georgia of reported archery hunting-related injuries. 92% of those is someone flying out of a tree stand that they didn't secure. The other eight is just, you know, a self-inflicted injury. So if we compare archery hunting to baseball and basketball, you know, those injury rates are much lower. So simply put, you know, non-participants, they don't get injured by archery hunters. I want to talk a little bit about some local success stories. So we have Fort Yargo State Park, which is within the city limits of Winder. And they started to notice they had a problem with deer. So they implemented an annual deer hunt. They average about 100 deer taken every year. And since they've started that deer management program, staff has reported that ecological integrity of the park is improving. And I think the most important thing is the documented deer vehicle collisions have gone down by 57% in the area. Forsyth County has started an urban archery program that we just had up and running this fall. And then it's used across the country. So Fairfax County has a really big archery program. They've been tracking hunted-related injuries since, I believe, 1959. They've never had a non-participant injured by an archery hunter. So again, it's very safe. Montgomery Parks uses archery hunting to manage their deer population. So it's being used all around Georgia and across the country. And that was kind of everything I had. So if you have any questions about different options, I know I kind of just glanced through USDA, but we can talk about that a little bit more as well.
Council questions?
Do you mind?
Go ahead.
You talked about the liability. By the way, thank you for coming in on this. This is really a topic that's quite hot here in Peachtree City. You talked about people coming in and doing some culling on your own property. And you glanced over the liability issue on that. Could you expand a little bit more on that?
Yeah. So essentially, the Georgia Recreational Property Act was put in place to encourage recreation. So if you allow someone to hunt on your property, you are shielded by the law for any sort of injury that might happen unless you maliciously fail to warn of a dangerous condition. So essentially, that is just putting in place protections to, for those landowners if they allow that free recreation. That's the key point. You can't charge.
Is it, is it, is there a limit on the size of the property that can be hunted? I mean, what if you've got half an acre?
Yeah.
You know, is there some issues there that we should be concerned about?
So the biggest issue if someone is going to hunt on a small plot like that is, you know, if that deer crosses property lines, you know, it runs 100 yards. They just, whoever, that hunter needs to get permission from that property owner before they retrieve the deer. So no one can come onto your property to hunt or retrieve deer without permission.
Good. That's nice clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, with Fort Yargo, how many acres is that, is that property? Do you have any idea?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I know it is a larger park because they actually use firearms rather than archery in Fort Yargo to manage their deer population. So that one is a pretty good size. But Forsyth County, I believe, we were looking at, I think it was 300 acres that their property was.
For, on the heels of that question, I don't see any cities up there. Is it reasonable to implement an urban archery program in a city 25 square miles, largely residential?
Yeah, definitely. The biggest thing in a city would just be trying to find green space to have hunters. So, you know, anyone can bring a hunter onto their property or hunt it themselves as long as they don't have archery ordinances. Whereas, you know, if we're going to do an organized hunt with the city, the biggest thing would be getting that property access. But that is definitely something, you know, we can work through. We'll come in and work with a city, a neighborhood, any sort of community that wants that urban deer management. And we'll walk through, you know, trying to find green spaces, what's an appropriate amount of hunters to put on the property, how many deer are we going to allow them to take? So we have a lot of flexibility and regulations that we can put in place if we're going to do an archery program.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think what you just said actually answered a couple of my questions. My last question would just be, how do you know once you're at a healthy population?
Yeah. So we talked about that biological, ecological, and social caring capacity. And it's a little bit tough because, you know, we can't put exact numbers on things. You know, we aren't able to get an exact population count for Peachtree City. But the big thing is going to be looking at that social caring capacity. So how, after we start managing that population, get those deer levels down a little bit? You know, are we starting to see those reduced conflict calls? Are those documented deer vehicle collision incidences in the area going down? And once we get them down, you know, you have to keep managing that population. But maybe instead of a yearly hunt, we do every other year, every two years. And so the big thing is just getting that population down to a number that we deem suitable and then just kind of maintaining it. The goal isn't to get rid of all deer. You're never going to do that. But yeah, that's something we can work with. I know the city has been keeping track of deer vehicle incidences, injured deer that the police have to put down, things like that. So that's also a baseline that we can track over time and see if that management has made a dent and we've reduced those numbers.
So when you've implemented these techniques in areas, there's typically an ongoing relationship with you and that area to?
Laura, is your microphone on? Hit the button on the bottom of the?
Oh, can y'all hear me now?
There you are.
Okay, so you're saying there's like an ongoing relationship between you and that area to continue to monitor it?
Yeah, definitely. So we'll work with an area, we'll work with the city and just kind of help them with monitoring and goals and just, you know, we'll see where we're at and, you know, we can adjust things as we see fit to reach those goals. And once we've reached a number we deem suitable, we can then, you know, figure out how we're going to continue to kind of keep that level over time.
Okay.
I have a question. So in the areas where you've done this, do you provide a list of the hunters or do you provide the hunters or do you encourage the park or the county or whatever to find their own?
So we do not provide hunters or facilitate any sort of list. But I will say, you know, urban archery hunting is a growing thing. So it's kind of, if you build it, they will come. There are some things that we can put in place to help make sure we have quality hunters in that area. So, you know, we, if we wanted to, we could put in place, you know, having to get an extra educational course. So they have bowhunting-specific courses that you can take. We could do a proficiency exam to make sure, you know, we have skilled archery hunters that are going to make good shots on deer. So it's very customizable if you work with us to kind of help set a program that meets your goals.
Mr. Hump?
I have one more question. You've been talking about the word "cost" along the way. And "work with us," kind of words I've been listening to. Is there a cost if we, as a city, decide to work with the Department of Natural Resources to help us out with deer reduction here?
Yeah. So that's the great thing about using hunters, is that there's no cost. You know, the big thing is just providing them that opportunity to come in and remove deer. If you were to use the USDA, there is a cost associated with hiring their service. It's not too big. I don't know, you know, I can't quote it off the top of my head, but they do have a cost associated with them.
Wouldn't it make sense to also share information and opportunity with our neighbors like Fayette County on our border, City of Tyrone? Does it make sense to enlist everybody at the same time?
Yeah, I mean, so it would be great if we could get a lot more management going all throughout Atlanta and it definitely is a growing thing. I have people reaching out to me almost every single day asking about deer management. So it's growing. You know, my position was created a year ago, so, and my job is to tackle the urban deer challenge. So it's growing and we're just going to keep expanding it. So, you know, the more people we can get on board and the more management we can have around the area, you know, the better we're going to be able to get those numbers to a place where we're balancing that social caring capacity with, you know, the health of the deer and the environment.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Council, go ahead.
Just Emily, to clarify, because we met with you before this and went over kind of the differences between a public archery hunt and USDA coming in. One of those is cost. Like USDA, you actually kind of just hire, they come in and do it. A public hunt is really a call for hunters. Like, just to clarify that, is, like, we don't, you know, they don't recruit them for us. It's a, you know, we call it out. We set what days that we're going to allow it. If that's, but it has to be, if I can, if I remember this correctly, if you do a public hunt, it has to be within deer season?
Yeah. So any use of hunters has to fall within our state regulations. So the hunting season this year started for archery, September 14th, and it goes through January 31st. So you have that window. A difference with the USDA is that they come in outside of the hunting season. They can do those removals at night outside of legal hunting hours. And they're using suppressed firearms in urban areas where typically, you know, the average person, there's ordinances against that.
I just wanted to clarify those two differences.
I'm glad you did.
Yeah, I am too. One more question. I keep saying that, but I'm sorry, it just popped in my head. Is there some guidelines that you can share with us if we decide to have a hunt here in Peachtree City? The things that we should be looking at and things to avoid and what to say to the hunters and what do we say to the homeowners? Is there something that, from DNR, that could help us and guide us in that if we decide to go in that direction?
Yeah. I mean, we will work with y'all as closely as you need and help you with any sort of, you know, communication aspect of how we're going to do this and all of that. So we will work closely with you because we want y'all to be successful and have a good, safe hunt.
Mr. Distodio?
The only question I have, I've hunted before, but with guns, not with arrows. Who cleans up afterwards?
A hunter.
Yeah. So a hunter would be responsible for processing that deer, field dressing it. You know, we can put things in place. So like if they're going to field dress that deer, you know, maybe we have collection sites and then we bury it after so we don't have to worry about, you know, people coming across deer remains. But those hunters are going to be responsible for collecting those animals and doing all of that.
Okay. And I think you took half of those pictures in my backyard. I think it's a great idea, Madam Mayor, that we get together with Tyrone or Sonoy or somebody and have more than just one city doing this.
All right. Council, do you want to ask Justin to bring us a deer management program, an urban archery program?
Yes.
Yes, can we? One comment?
Absolutely.
Can we do it where there's an estimate for, if we were to go with the USDA, what the cost would be to do that versus?
Yeah, I can break both. I'll get with Emily. We can break.
Because it sounds like if we can't put this in place quickly, then we'd be stuck maybe doing the USDA hunt initially. And then, because they can do outside the parameters of the hunting season, and then we could actually look to do something next year.
All right. I think we're all in agreement. I can't thank you enough for, again, we really appreciate it, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Work session discussion item B, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities: Alternate Voting Ordinance, Number 1230.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to apologize in advance. I'm actually on a virtual training. So as soon as this is, my presentation is over, I am going to be stepping out. So we brought forward an item that was discussed by Council to allow alternate voting of the Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. And so the ordinance that's within your packet actually provides for that. Any Board, Commission, or Authority that is not one that was created by the General, Georgia General Assembly and has an actual alternate would be allowed to, if this ordinance is approved, to have the alternate vote whenever one of the regular members is not present. Currently, the alternates are required to attend at least 60% of the meetings. And they are also allowed to participate in the discussion of the items. So they're fairly familiar. And so again, this ordinance would allow for the alternates to vote whenever there is a member not present at those meetings.
So in our case, this would pertain only to the planning commission?
Correct. The planning commission is the only one that has an alternate. If you all change it in the future and allow alternates in other boards, they would also be allowed to vote.
So questions or concerns? I'd like this on the next agenda. You will take care of it.
Yep.
I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, thanks very much. All right. Work session discussion item C, Senior Property Tax Exemption.
All right, I got this. I got to flip to my page. In your packet, you should have received kind of the breakdown of how we came up with these numbers. You should have a table of the past five years of our senior homestead exemption and how many people actually took advantage of it, what the credit value was each year. It changes based on what our millage rate is. So even if you have kind of the same thresholds and things like that, depending on what your actual rate is, the value can change. You see the total cost of the city there is very, very minimal right now with the exemption we have. The exemption's been in place for about 20 years?
Since 2005.
When Ted was, when Ted was young?
Yeah, voted on in 2005.
2005, okay.
You were young then?
Young girl.
I, so what we did, and Paul and I worked on this together, we went through and, on the second table you have in your memo, we went through and showed kind of the breakdown of the current way we do the exemption. We did a line, that's another yellow line there of current, if all applied. So like if everyone eligible applied for it, what that would look like. And then below that, we did an inflation adjustment. So that basically just takes inflation since 2004, 2005. We did about 20 years of inflation. And for that value to be about equal to what it was in 2004, 2005, like to what a dollar is worth, this was what, this is the minimum you would need to get up to just to do that inflation adjustment. But from hearing from Council, you all want to do something more substantial and you want to do something that's going to last, you know, you don't want to just adjust for inflation now. You want something that's going to last another 10 to possible 15, 20 years and not have to adjust it again. Because from my understanding with Ted as well too, we can't, we can't write into,
An escalator.
Yeah, we can't write an escalator into the, into what we send to the state.
Which is unfortunate.
Yeah.
That is unfortunate.
So you have your options there. They go up. We did come to a determination that we think 60,000 threshold for income per household is a good level to go up to that should be sustainable for a good while. The real thing we kind of played around with was the total value exemption, which is the value exemption off of your house assessment. We kind of came, the green is our recommendation is kind of where we came to, about 15,000 and increases the current value by about 200% to a household. But all these other ones go up and down from there. The next one goes up 300%, the next one goes up 500%. Like it kind of escalates exponentially from there.
What's the better, in dollars?
Of the one we recommended?
Yeah.
90, about right at $90.
$90 and what's that?
Eighty-nine seventy-five.
The exemption is, yeah, 15,000.
That's what I want to know.
Yes, yes, sorry. The exemption, we're recommending a 15 on the exemption. The value to a citizen would be $90 from 30 right now, which is a 200% increase. So that's what I, that's what I have. This is for you all to discuss and decide kind of where you want it to land for vote.
I think the recommendation is a good one. I appreciate that Suzanne brought this to our attention. It was long overdue and I think this is a good step forward. Anybody else?
I agree. Good step forward.
I'd like to know if, between now and when we act on it at the next meeting, hopefully, could you expand the chart in just a slightly different direction?
Okay.
If, we have a lot of numbers with the income threshold at 60,000. And I'm just wondering if you could identify how many people, like at the 50,000, would qualify based on anything that you have? And then have it be with the higher, like slightly lower income threshold, but I'd like to balance it out with then a higher exemption amount. In other words, target more of the people who have lower income, but give them better benefit. And I'd like to see at least the numbers, how many would, what would be the tax impact, the revenue loss?
Can't see that.
I'll zoom in. All right, your question was income threshold, Suzanne?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Right here?
Okay.
You see this column right here? That's how many households with the income thresholds.
I could see it before you highlighted it. Can you un-highlight that for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, at the $50,000 income threshold, there would be 1,687 who would qualify?
Yes.
Okay.
Estimated by the census. I don't, you know, these are, these are census numbers.
Right. And, and then, if we were to go, it would still be the same tax benefit off. See, I kind of like, as I'm looking at this, if we put the total value of the exemption at the $30,000 reduction, I think that that's going to have a more long-lasting positive impact on what we're trying to do with this. So, because that would give $179 off the household property tax with the current numbers. You know, with that, with our millage, current millage rate at least.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, yeah.
That would be that cost.
And it's, this is like walking the tightrope. Do we go on the side of what income threshold and then what tax reduction? And I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind is, and it was a startling number that I saw on the first chart, which is that there are quite a few people who are qualified, or no, it's on the, on this, this chart. But there's a lot of people who are qualified who don't apply.
Yeah.
And I think that, now, I think that's impacted with our current situation because who's going to come in, and I've said this before at different discussions, who's going to come in and give all of their income information just to save $30 on their property tax?
Right.
Very few people. So, I think that, yes, we can't necessarily know if we fix this as far as we can, exactly what percentage of the qualified people are actually going to go ahead and do it. And some of that is going to be a lack of knowledge. Some people just don't know about this.
Well, we have, we have the means to push that out.
And then, and then other people will just not want to give their income information to anybody else. It's a matter of privacy.
And, I mean, the cost is broke down by if every single person did it, which even if we get all the information out, even if it is a more substantial credit.
Which is kind of the direction of.
You're never going to get 100%.
We're never going to have that total impact of the loss of, even at the very bottom number on, on our chart, we're never really going to see a $352,000 loss of revenue from this. It just, you know, people just won't all apply.
Agreed.
So, we'll have to weigh it out, pros and cons. But I'm glad to see the, the reduced number that if we lower the, the income threshold to $50,000, that's actually going to take 300 or so people out of the qualification. So, we really need to look down the road how, how far we really want this to have a positive effect and how much effect we want it to have for each citizen.
The double-edged sword is the 60,000. Even now, and you want to make this last 10 years, how far is $60,000 income going to go for somebody?
Exactly.
Right. Well, you know, and I played around, I don't know what the, offhand, what the current Social Security income maximum is. But if you have two people in a household, a husband and a wife, or two, two adults on Social Security, I don't know what that actual number is for how much income they would have. But I'm assuming, and we know what that does, but I'm assuming that if we put it in at the $60,000 level, that household would qualify if they're just living on Social Security income, which they're kind of, that's the target audience, I think, for this.
I guess it would just depend though, right? Because Social Security is different for everyone.
I know, but there are, there are some charts that identify that the max, and I didn't look that up. But, maybe, well, we have a couple of weeks that we can do some additional research to kind of.
Yeah.
Decide where we want to hone in and set the numbers.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm hearing right now is, we have the kind of sample, I know you're not voting on it today, but we have the sample resolution, is it a resolution?
Turn your mic on.
Did I cut it off? It's on. We have the sample resolution in the packet. So, from what I'm hearing, I guess we're going to leave it the same right now, and we'll just, y'all.
The same being your recommendation?
The same, yeah, 60 and 15.
Yeah.
I'd like to go, I, I mean, I'd like to go personally with the bottom number.
50, 30?
60, 30.
Oh, 60.
I mean, that's my personal thing. Because I think that's going to have the greatest impact for the longest period of time. And as we've discovered with this, this is not easy. And obviously, in 20 years, no prior counsel addressed this issue, whether that's from lack of knowledge of it or lack of wanting to do the work on it. We don't know. I, I mean, we just don't know. It could be lack of empathy, Frank, it could. I mean, we're trying to keep, I mean, I see the value in keeping our senior citizens happy and in their houses. You know, when you force them to sell their house and rent someplace, what you're really doing is eroding their entire financial estate before they die. If they can't afford to stay in their house, and if this would make any kind of a difference, I'd like to have it have some impact. So.
I have a question for you.
Good morning, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question that maybe you can answer. I see the charts. I like them, the way you've done these spreadsheets. Can you expand that out to, up to $70,000 as the threshold and see what kind of results we get when you put in either 15, or 20, or $30,000 as your exemption? And see, excuse me, how big of a hit that is to us. But it also gives us how many people or applicants would that catch. And the reason why I've gone to that level, or thinking about that level, is if somebody's, you know, working in a household where they're working at a minimum wage job, you're looking at maybe an annual income of about $45,000 at a minimum wage, $20 an hour kind of stuff. And in Peachtree City, that's tough to survive, I'm sure. And if they're getting some Social Security, as, as Counsel, Councilwoman Brown says, there's not a lot of money to go around. So, if we can, for those people who are in that classification, if you want to call it that, is there any other ways that we can reach out to them so that they can, you know, age in place and stay in their home and give them a little bit better results on their taxes? And how much is that really of a hit to us if we extend it out a little further than that?
So, you want to see 70,000 and 30,000?
$30,000. Just, again, just to see where we're at and just.
That's fine.
Then we can discuss it a little bit more. Maybe that's too much. Maybe that's too many, too much dollars to expend. But it's certainly something we should at least look at, because if it's a small amount, then maybe that's a better way to go. Because it'll capture more people in our, in our community that need that little extra help on their taxes.
And we will see the cost of the city.
Right, that's what is, what is our cost.
70, 70, 30 will be more.
Yeah, of course.
Than 60, 30.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't just agree to go with 60, 30, like Ms. Brown just said? Any reason why we wouldn't just go ahead with?
And let me clarify, 70, 30 would be the same credit value. So, 70, 30, if you keep the total, whatever, the second call, the total exemption, 30,000, like, the credit value would be 180, like, that 179, that would stay the same. You would just have more people that qualify for it, which would cost the city potentially more.
I would suggest that Ms. Brown had a good, you know, she wants to see 60, 30, I, I would support that.
I would too.
Okay.
I'd like to see the numbers, but I think I could support that.
Okay.
I agree. I'd like to see the numbers before we make a final decision, but I certainly can at least see the 60, 30 as a, as a good starting point.
Justin, can't you adjust the grid to show 60, 30 right now?
Yeah, I mean, I did. I put it back to 50. It wasn't originally on 60.
Yes, I thought.
I can't do 70 because I don't have those numbers. I have to get on the internet.
All right.
Yeah, the 60, 30 is in the grid. It's in the agenda.
60, 30 is right there.
I think he.
Well, he's just fixing it now.
Yeah, he fixed it. It was, he moved it down to 50 on the bottom.
Oh, excuse me.
There you go. You have about 2,000 people. And the value was 352,000. That's if everybody takes advantage of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Would, would there be any reason why we might want to look at a $40,000 reduction in the assessed taxable income?
What are you basing that on? I mean, we could throw numbers at this wall.
I know, I'm just saying, it's, you know, that's why I said, it's walking on a tightrope. Do you go on one side or the other?
I would suggest we do 60, 30 and then get a concerted effort to get the word out.
Total that, like, 40,000?
Communicate as well as possible to all, you know, every senior who could be affected by this.
I could do it real quick, but 40,000, you're probably getting up into above half a million at that point.
And at 60, 30, you said, what, that's 500% increase?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And that would be?
Yeah, that bottom one is a 500, or, yeah, 500% increase over what you have now.
We may be hit it.
Well, the one thing that I, you know, heard in when we started all this discussion is, there's not going to be any escalator in this. So, that means that future councils are going to have to do what we're doing now to make any changes as, as inflation changes, as pay, pay changes, as the population of Peachtree City continues to age. Right now, it's been how many years on this, Madam Mayor? It lasted 20 years, 25 years?
Yeah.
You know, do we really want to put something out there that may be looking good for today's market, but just may not be looked at for another 20 years?
What do you want, Mr. Holland? What is your suggestion?
No, I'm not saying what I want. It's just, I think it's just, we need to make sure that we have in mind that this is going to be something.
20-year inflation has been 60% from 20 years ago.
Okay.
So, that's, that's, if that gives you a little marker in your mind.
Any other?
Just one, just one reminder with regard to the timeline on this. Obviously, we're doing this now so that we can put it in the hand of our local legislatures to take to, legislators to take to the session that starts in January, to the legislative, you know, session, to get this approved. Because this has to go as a referendum vote, and it would be put on the ballot in November of 2025, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and by the time it would take effect, it's going to be?
2026.
2026. Because even voting on it in November, you're not going to affect the 2026 tax year. It would actually be the 2027 tax year. So, that's another thing that we need to keep in mind as we're looking at these numbers. There is that long of a delay.
It would take effect in 2026.
January 1, 26.
If the voters approve it, it would take effect January 1 of 2026.
Okay. That's good. That's a year ahead of what I was figuring.
All right, anything else? Great plan. All right.
Are we going with 30 and 60?
You're going to put that on?
Yes.
He's going to update that.
60 and 30, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any, thank you very much.
For the next meeting.
Yes, on the 21st of November. Work session, discussion item D, Recreation Advisory Group.
Yep. I have a couple of slides. Should be slides on that. There you go. Okay. So, I did a little presentation on this one a few months ago. Made it very similar to the Transportation Advisory Group with very, very defined qualifications for the candidates for these seats. You all wanted to make it more generic. I really didn't know a way to make it more generic without just taking out all of, all of the qualifications there and just basically doing it like a Planning Commission or Airport Authority or CVB, where there are no definitions in the ordinance itself. Anyone can apply for it. But when we, you do the selection committee, then that's when you interview people and really gauge who you want to appoint based, based on their qualifications.
Reasonable, very reasonable.
So, really, that's the only change that I've made is just taking that out of the proposed ordinance.
I like it. Any questions?
I would just like to get a copy that I could read.
The print is messed up.
The printed copy's messed up.
But I think the idea, Madam Mayor, I think that idea is an excellent one to just get, let's get the experience of the people, and then we can decide if they fit. And we certainly then can look to say, what if we've got all the same experience? May not, that may not be good. We got to pick and choose as we go along. I like that idea a lot, Justin.
All right, anybody else comment? We'll go with that.
The only other question I have, and this was brought up by somebody, and I thought it was maybe a good thing to ask you, is, under the duties and recommendations that they can make to Counsel, would you want to include art in, in the function of this group, like, public art recommendations?
I was so impressed with Bentonville, Arkansas, and their concerted efforts toward public art. My suggestion would be that as we decide, not today, but going forward, to have a public art committee, I would see putting it under the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I think that's better.
I think it gives enough distance for us.
Yep.
And I think we would get something robust and forward-thinking. And I think I would, I would really have a high confidence level if we had a public art committee that was under the CVB somehow.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen some pictures of, in various places, of really interesting bike racks that are like shaped like bicycles and.
Absolutely.
I mean, it just, it can expand.
There's so much to do.
There's so many beautiful arts stuff over the city we went to.
Sawani. That was fun. That was a lot of fun. So, the answer to your question seems to be no.
Keep this as a.
Keep it separate.
Got it.
The number you're going to be putting on there is only five people? Did I, did I read that right?
So, yeah, I think I did. Let me see.
Oh, did we move it to seven or nine?
Not nine.
I know, I'm just throwing out the numbers that we had kicked around. Seven sounds like a good number to me.
Get seven in here.
I agree.
Did I go down to, let me see. I'm reading this. Sorry. Okay. Well, whatever it is, I'm hearing seven. So, I'll make sure it's seven.
Thank you.
And, and the other thing is, as I was talking to the mayor here and just saying, basically, we got to make sure we've got a variety of people on that. We don't need all people from organized sports on there. We need it completely anywhere and everywhere in our city.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brown, I know that they are currently working on bike racks. That has been, we have been working on a design and that is currently being worked on and.
Good to know.
And Wilson and. Good, good. All right. Anything else? Justin, do you have what you need?
Yep, I do.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Work session, discussion items E, Surplus and Disposal of Decommissioned Vehicles. Jonathan Miller.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Justin, real quick, I don't know if you noticed, you've created the ragtag groups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if you did that on purpose.
He did.
I'll never tell.
Real quick, this item is for surplusing vehicles that we no longer use or have been replaced through either CIP or SLOSS. Because of the cost, they always come in front of Counsel. So, there's two items that we expect will sell on GOV deals, higher than $5,000. It's the old dive truck, I believe, from the fire station, the 450, and then a stormwater pickup that has been replaced this past year. So, it'll come on the next council. It usually goes under a consent item, but it's just to let you know that we're surplusing those vehicles.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And while you're there, work session, discussion item F, Capital Improvement Vehicle Purchases.
Okay, so this one's a little bit different to kind of keep purchases moving, because we've had so many difficulties since COVID with purchasing specifically vehicles, PD, cars specifically. We're going to ask for Counsel to approve the purchases, for staff to go ahead and make the purchases on budgeted vehicles that were in the budget through the CIP. But we're adding a lot of caveats in here to make sure we keep Counsel informed. We'll use all of our ordinances. We'll follow all of our ordinances. The way we purchase them will either be state contract, competitive bids, or solicitation of quotes. Also, anything that exceeds the budgeted price in CIP will have to come back to Counsel to get approval. So, we won't, we won't make that purchase. In addition, there'll be a follow-up. So, any vehicle that we purchase off the list, the immediate, the next council meeting will provide the information of who the vendor was, what the purchase price was, and so forth. And then, there's a list of all of the vehicles that we have in the CIP on that chart that we'll bring in front of the next council meeting for approval on this item.
All right. Next item I have is item G, Purchase Replacement Skid Steer Track Loader for Public Works.
Yes. So, the previous item is just for vehicles. All of our equipment will still follow the same. All of our equipment will still follow the same pattern where we bring it up. So we have gotten, we've obtained quotes for the Skidsteer replacement in the CIP budget. It is, it's a Sourcewell contract, but also in addition, Yancey is giving the city of Peachtree City another twenty-six thousand dollar discount on the unit. So it brings the total to right at eighty-nine, three. We budgeted eighty-eight, so it's thirteen hundred over the budgeted amount. But we have other vehicles and equipment that will supplement that thirteen hundred dollar overage.
All right. Next item? H, extension of mechanical services agreement. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. David Borkowski, City Engineer. As you're all aware, every year our contracts expire and we need to renew them on an annual basis. This one is for the mechanical services agreement that we have for, with Shoemate. We, we're basically going to recommend approving them for, for another year as our, our contractor. They've been working with us since two thousand and nine on all of our facilities, HVAC equipment, our eighty-some plus buildings. They're very familiar with everything. They, they do a great job coordinating with our facilities manager. They're also one of the very few companies that are certified through TRAIN to work on our stuff and also with our, our control systems. There are so much that goes into those control systems and programming and everything. So we're recommending that we approve them for another year. The, the great thing is that they're not going up on our, our price for, for another year. We currently budgeted one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred for that. So there's money in the budget for next year. So we're, we'll be coming next, next council meeting to recommend approval for them. Were there any questions for?
And this is for one year?
Yes.
And you're satisfied with their performance?
Yes, yes, they do a great job working with our folks.
All right.
Good company.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Now, work session, discussion item I, budget amendment, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four LMIG.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
These are just ordinarily consent budget amendments. The LMIG, which is the Georgia Department of Transportation's, gosh darn it.
Paving.
Paving, well, it, it goes towards paving. It's the Local Maintenance and Improvement Program. I do not know why, I can never remember that. They had extra funds left over after they closed out that project for two thousand and twenty-four and so they distributed it among the municipalities. And we got an additional five hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. And this is just adjusting the budget to apply that, those funds towards two thousand and twenty-four paving.
So five hundred and sixty-six thousand that we didn't see coming.
Always looking to get maybe we don't know about.
A good budget amendment.
Nothing wrong with that.
That's nice.
Okay.
We don't have, we don't have anything targeted for that at this point, other than just put it in the paving, paving projects for future.
That's what it's for.
Okay.
It's specifically earmarked for that.
And it can only be used for paving.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Who do we thank for that? Our engineer for District Three or the GDOT commissioner or?
The GDOT, I mean, I think it was just GDOT had the money left over and.
Distributed.
Distributed it.
I think the governor had signed off on it too, from what I read.
Thanks very much. All right, next item, budget amendment, fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five.
These are every single year, they're just housekeeping budget amendments. They're cleaning up last year and carrying forward into this year. I don't have the budget amendments yet because we're still waiting on lag reports and things like that, but they'll be in your packet before the voting, the voting agenda on the twenty-first.
Okay, routine, routine.
Routine.
Thank you. And then finally, budget amendment, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act.
This is the ten million dollars of our ARPA funds that were earmarked towards revenue replacement. And so we're coming up on December thirty-first and it's just used for general government and council earmarked specific projects for those funds. And so we're just going to move them out of the ARPA fund into the Capital Improvement Fund. I've talked to the auditors. It's, everything is good with that. And then we'll just continue those projects through our CIP funds. We're, we're still leaving the three million, five hundred thousand that's for the WASA projects that are specific underground category five point one and five point two ARPA projects. But all the rest of it will just move into CIP.
And is this how we assure that all of those ARPA funds are allocated by the end of this calendar year?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't want to give any back?
No, ma'am.
So this is strictly an accounting to make sure that we encumber them and get them set so that we don't have to pay them back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Next item, budget amendment, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, Keep Peachtree City Beautiful Fund.
Strongly needed.
Yes, wonderful.
Last council meeting, y'all approved to go from a quarterly dollar to a monthly dollar and this is just budgeting for those funds.
Questions? We're going through them so fast, I'm having trouble keeping up on my screen here. All right, next item, M, Backyard Chickens.
Thank you, Kelly.
I got an old school hard copy.
Yep.
Touche.
Laura is subbing in for Robin this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, Laura Hook, Senior Planner. So you have tasked us with looking at the topic and backyard chickens. So staff has reviewed and compared ordinances from about eight non-rural communities in Georgia and, and prepared a draft ordinance that was presented to the Planning Commission for discussion and their recommendation. And we're presenting a revised draft today that is, that's in your packet that was based on that discussion. So the review of the ordinances revealed some common, some commonalities between those various communities and those are proposed to be incorporated into, into our ordinance. First, it's important to clearly define what a chicken is so that we don't end up with things such as roosters or geese or peafowl, those type of things that can be very noisy. So staff is proposing the definition that you see there on the screen to be a female pullet or hen of the Gallus, Gallus domesticus. Official terminology there. Next, we're proposing that chickens be fully enclosed at all times to ensure they stay on the property and do not trespass onto other properties. This way code enforcement doesn't become chicken wranglers. And the enclosure can be a coop or a run or a combination of the two. There's also language proposed in the draft that would, that would give code enforcement permission to enter the property for inspections if there were complaints received. Next, a universal item that seemed to appear among those various ordinance that we reviewed was to set a minimum square footage area for those coops and runs. So a common size that was, that was seen and also recommended in a UGA agricultural brochure is four square feet per chicken for coops and ten square feet per, per chicken for runs. Moving on, another, another item that seemed to be universal was that chickens only be permitted in rear yards, not side yards or front yards of the properties. And our, our ordinance is, just so you know, we have lots of corner lots in this, in the city. Our ordinance defines a rear yard as that portion of the yard that is behind the plane of the house. So if you were on a corner lot, you know, visualize a line on the corner that's your secondary front yard that would run from the edge of the house towards the back and it wouldn't be able to come beyond that towards the road. So we'd like to incorporate that limitation for the rear yard only in the draft. It's incorporated in the draft. Finally, the ordinance establishes a maximum number of chickens permitted based on the lot size and also a minimum setback distance for a coop from, from property lines. These, these didn't seem to be universal amongst the jurisdictions that we looked at. A couple of the more urban areas studied, like Suwannee, Marietta, started off with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, which is not very large. And our, our zoning ordinance ties closely to the square foot of a lot size. So our, our zoning districts are based on lot sizes. So the original draft that was presented to the Planning Commission proposed a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. And you look at the chart up here, summarizes the, the different lot sizes and the maximum number of chickens proposed for those lots. So less than ten thousand square feet, no chickens permitted. Between ten thousand and eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine, which is our zones R-one and R-ten, maximum of three chickens. Twelve thousand to twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. So now you're in the two, the half an acre range, that twelve, twelve thousand area. Again, our zones R-twelve to, and R-fifteen, maximum of five. And then twenty-two thousand to forty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine, zone R-twenty-two, maximum of eight. And forty-three thousand, which is close to an acre or larger, which are our zones R-forty-three and ER, ten chickens per acre or a fraction thereof with a maximum capped at thirty. So in addition to that, the ordinance also proposes a twenty-foot minimum setback, setback for coops from any rear property line. And this will be different from a shed as an accessory structure, which, which is permitted in rear setbacks with limitations with respect to the size of the shed and the width of your, of your rear, rear property line. So if it's less than fifty feet, you're not allowed to encroach. If it's between fifty feet and a hundred feet, you can encroach a certain amount. Or the size of the shed can, I can read it from the ordinance, but anyway. You get the idea. But given the potential for what we're talking about, smells and sounds, we didn't feel that following those lines would be appropriate for chicken facilities. So thus, we're proposing the twenty-feet setback. Lastly, the ordinance includes a permit requirement for coops. We currently only require a building permit for habitable structures, which means you can put a body in it. Requiring the permit, and this was something that came out of the Planning Commission discussion, requiring a permit would ensure compliance with the setback that, that we're, that we're putting forth and also give the right of entry via the signed application to allow inspectors to go onto the property to verify the terms of, that the terms of the application are being met, that they're doing what they said they were going to do. So these are basically the bones of the ordinance. When the draft was presented to the planning commissions, they had, they had several concerns about things like nuisance issues such as noise, smells, waste, the attraction of predators, and protections for neighbors in neighborhoods that don't have HOAs that would be able to regulate these, you know, permissions, aside from, from our, our requirements. So finally, the, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council does not adopt an ordinance to allow backyard chickens as an accessory use. But if you do decide, they recommend that the minimum lot area required to permit the chickens would be at least one acre or rent the forty-three thousand square foot size for zones R-forty-three and ER. That's all I have. If you have questions?
Okay. Comments, Council?
Laura, when you started off, I think you said you looked at so many different cities or ordinance. Were they residential?
Ye- yes, yeah. Let's see, we looked at like Roswell, Suwannee, Oconee County, Marietta, Henry County, Gwinnett County, Shambly, and Johns Creek.
Thank you. So there were residential cities that you looked at their ordinance?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And, and give me the upshot again? I'm looking for, is, is there a chart in our packet? Because I don't remember seeing it.
No, so Robin did the staff report and I noticed she didn't include the chart.
That's okay. What's the upshot? I mean, if we were to look at six of those cities that you just mentioned.
Well, basically.
Do you want a copy of the chart? I, I only have one with me, but that shows you the eight.
The.
No, it's, it's two pages. Four, four cities are outlined on one page and four on the other.
My explanation kind of summarized the, the commonalities. Maximum number per lot size, size, size of the coops. I mean, number of chickens. Number of square feet needed for a chicken in a coop or a run. The setback requirements.
A que- question, if you have a fenced-in backyard, is that considered the run?
Uh, let's see.
Or do you have to have like another fence within your fence? I know some of those coops are on trailers and they move and they have to be relocated. I'm just curious to know what a run means really.
No, I think, I think the fenced-in backyard, as long as, you know, it's meeting our requirements for fencing.
Sure.
Would be permitted.
Okay. All right. Council, we love our Planning Commission. I was very surprised to, to hear their concerns about noise and smell and proximity to neighbors and predators. And I think they brought up a whole lot of considerations that I really hadn't thought of before. My inclination is to go with what the Planning Commission recommended is a one-acre minimum.
And Laura, this, if you have an HOA that doesn't allow it, you have to follow the HOA?
That, that would be correct, yeah.
Pass this down. Take one, take one and pass it down.
I am, I don't like the idea of having quarter acre lots with chickens on them. And that's, you know, that's ten thousand to twelve thousand square feet. That, that, that bothers me. And once you get up to about a half, half an acre or beyond, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. But that's just my opinion. Although I don't like to really buck the Planning Commission on this, but I think we really need to take another look. Because I usually, they're usually spot on with what they do. And I don't think I understand their reticence of having chickens in the backyard and completely turning it down, except for one acre and above. Did I understand that right, Laura?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Go ahead, yeah.
My turn to talk? Okay. Okay, I think the Planning Commission, I love them, I really do. I love them, but they got this wrong. The whole idea of backyard chickens is not that you have to have an agricultural grade size property to have a backyard chicken. Chickens don't take a lot of space. They don't make a lot of smell if they're properly cared for. They got it wrong. And I, and I pretty much told them that at the Planning Commission meeting. It's like, they got it wrong. There is no reason why you can't have domestic chickens and domestic ducks. And what I just passed out to my fellow council members is kind of a more specific breakdown of how we should consider the acreage or the square footage as opposed to just the zoning thing. For instance, my house sits in an R-fifteen zoned neighborhood. But by my calculations, I have just about twenty-two thousand square foot on my property because of the shape of the cul-de-sac, this, that, whatever. So even though it's zoned R-fifteen and at the R-fifteen level that's being outlined, you know, I would be stuck with five chickens. And so, so I think that that's not necessarily the best way to go. I think we should not look at just the R aspect, but look at the square footage. So I passed that a chart. Justin, if you want a chart, pass, pass another one down to Justin. I'm sorry. I did print one for you, so. But anyway, what I, what I kind of was looking at was if you have less than ten thousand, why not let them have two chickens? Two chickens don't take a lot of space. It's just, you know, doable. Two chickens are not a big, big amount. And then if you have twelve thousand. Well, they're not going to tango, they're only going to be hens or, or female ducks. And then if you have, so if you have ten thousand square foot, I was thinking, or between ten and twelve, three chickens. Between twelve and fifteen would be four chickens. Between 12 and 15 would be four chickens. Between 15 and 18 could be five chickens. 18,000 or more, that would be six. And if you have 22,000 square feet, eight. It's kind of a better, more specific sliding scale, increasing, just instead of going from zero to three to five to eight. And then, if you have 43,000 square foot or larger, 12 per acre, and that could be a percentage. So, that's what I was looking at. And with regard to the coop and the run, I agree that, you know, they need to have some coop space, but, you know, those people who don't understand chickens don't understand, when the chicken goes into the coop, they go up on a roost bar and/or a board. And a board is actually better for them, so that they don't have to cling to a bar all night. And that's where they're just going to sit, and they're all going to group together, because that's what chickens do. And they're going to have their favorite place, and they're going to just... So, having a huge coop is kind of like a little bit of an overkill, because they're really only going to go in the coop to go to the nesting box to lay an egg, and the rest of the time, if the door is open, they're going to be outside in the enclosed area, or if you're doing it in your yard. And, so, I don't know whether the four square foot per chicken for coops, when you start to get to a much larger size or larger number of chickens allowed on a particular-sized piece of property, would be excessively high. So if you're going to have 10 or 12 chickens to have, you know, you have to have 48 square foot of coop just for those chickens, and they're all going to be up on the roosting bars, and not all in there on the floor. So...
Do you have chickens, Jessica?
Yes, I have.
So you're speaking from experience?
Yes, I am. And believe me, they have their spot, and if another chicken tries to take their place on the bar, there's going to be a chicken bite.
Oh, goodie.
But you're not going to see it, it's going to be inside the coop. Anyway, the other thing that I was looking at was, do we really need permits? I understand the concern to have rights of entry. And if you're building an actual structure that's attached, you know, permanently affixed to the property, you know, obviously that would be an accessory. So, that might be a consideration, but I really think that we need to kind of expand this, as far as like allowing 10,000 square foot or less to have two chickens. And technically, although a lot of people don't want to think about this, a lot of people have chickens in their house.
Their house?
And we're not taking that on right now. Don't take on chickens in the yard.
No, I just want you to understand, I mean, there are some bantam, there are some bantam chickens that are very small, and they're only just a little bit larger, in fact, they're smaller than a macaw. And you can have a macaw, and they make a lot of noise, they violate the noise ordinance. But a bantam chicken is very small, and a lot of people have them in their house.
Councilmembers?
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so if this is based on square footage rather than just zoning, how do people find out? Is there a place that people can go to find out what their square footage of their property is? Is that information that's publicly available?
If, some of the older properties, they would have to have it surveyed if we don't have a plat on file.
But Laura, we have those, we have those, right?
Well, it's much easier for some of the newer subdivisions and whatnot. Some of the older, I mean, we've had people come in looking for plaques that we don't have anything on file. They can try with the county, but some of our older plaques are hard to read, even though we do have them still. So, most likely, I'll say most likely, we can give them a square footage, but it's not 100%.
Laura, doesn't the Qpublic.net from the county give the square footage of each lot in the county?
I think it does.
I think so too, but I'm not sure how correct it is.
Right.
But I do know that it does list it there, and I just wanted to make sure that's indeed true.
There are a lot of properties on there that don't have the acreage listed. That's the problem with that. However, the Qpublic net does have, where you can do a rough measurement of your property to kind of estimate it. How official that is, is another issue. Maybe, maybe we write this as R10 or the 10,000 square foot, and if you're looking, if you think you're in, like me, where I'm zoned R15, but I really have, I mean, my property is huge, considering, I'm looking at it going, oh, there's a lot more, you know, land in the front and backyard. So maybe if somebody wants to go beyond what the R would be, they would have to get the survey-
Like if you could provide proof?
...they have. Right, so, in that case, it might be worth getting a survey if you wanted to have more than what the R would have. So, but if we write it to allow for that, that might be the best way to go.
So, if I may, my suggestion would be, per the planning commission, who we love and trust, on an acre, which is 43,000 square foot or larger, 10 per acre. I could be talked into half an acre, as we see in our charts, and thank you for these charts, Suzanne, they're very helpful. Henry County's got maximum number for a half an acre at four, four max. I see no jurisdictions anywhere that call for a permit, with the single exception of Swanee. I would submit that we could do this without a permit, and that's my whole story. I would suggest one acre, 10, you could have up to 10, no permit in accordance with almost all the other cities, hens only in the rear yard, and that a half an acre would allow four max. And I don't think we should go any smaller than that, with deference to our planning commission.
I would agree with that. Planning commission's done a great job.
They have.
Are you, did I hear you say, for the acre size, what's up there? Or did you, you didn't say a maximum of 10, did you? You, 10 per acre?
Maximum number of 10 on a 43,000 or larger, which is as you have it?
Up to a maximum of 30?
Oh.
If you're, well, some of those lots are large, they can be up to five acres, so...
Cool.
Okay, what it says.
What that does is, for an acre, it puts a threshold, once you have an acre-
For the acre, yes. But if they have a five-acre lot, they still can't have more than 30?
Yeah.
Got it, okay, yes. Good point, I had noticed that. And I would say, out of deference to Ms. Brown, that I would agree with a half an acre for four max.
I think that's beyond what's, you know, necessary as far as, I mean, I could put a chicken tractor or a coop in my backyard, nobody's going to, it's not going to interfere with any of my neighbors, but if I only have 22,000 square foot or less, that's not a half an acre.
Right.
So, basically, I'm fighting this fight to get backyard chickens, and you're telling me I can't have them. I don't like that.
Given the lot size, I think it should be based on the lots-
I don't think that that's right.
Maybe you make the lot size 20,000 square feet to one acre, it gets a certain amount of chickens, and then above that, but I'm not making exactly a half an acre. You know, I'm saying maybe make it 20,000 square feet, which is slightly less than a half an acre.
I disagree. I disagree based on the fact that just the research that our own city staff did and put forward has a better chart, that has better workup than what you're saying.
Okay.
Anybody else? Councilmember Johnson?
I, I think people already have chickens. I think I live in an R1, if I'm not mistaken, I have a neighbor who had chickens. So people, this is something people are already doing. I went down Robinson Road the other day and passed a bird, and I was like, what is that? I pass it, and it was a chicken. So...
Did you hit it?
I did not hit it. It was on the side, but it was definitely a chicken. I think there's some room for some middle ground here, because I think that this is already going on. I don't know about lot sizes as far as square feet, I want something that is, something that's easy for our code enforcement to define and regulate. And I feel like zonings might be the way to do that, and that's how they set it up, and that's probably for a reason. I'm personally not opposed to what they put forward.
This?
I'm not opposed to it.
What the city put forward, not-
This is what our staff researched, and this is what they felt was a good proposal for our city. So, even though I think what Councilwoman Brown wants is more than this, and maybe what some of y'all want is less than this, then that probably means that what they proposed is somewhere in the middle. So I would say that I am okay with this, and there may be points that we want to change with this, but I feel like, one of the things I do want to make sure that doesn't happen that was spoken of before, is we have areas that can have chickens, and I want to make sure, like, whatever we do isn't giving more, putting more limitations on something where that they don't are, where there's not limits. Like, what did, yeah, are the, is it going to change where like, you know, some zonings already get to do this?
It actually, it actually looks like it gives them better rights than they have now.
Would they have to like come in and get a permit, when they don't have to right now?
Well, I think just, I think we would treat that like a legally non-conforming, like a grandfather situation.
Okay, because I'm like, if they don't have to get a permit now, I wouldn't want them to have to get a permit when it's something they can already do. You know, I think what we're looking for permits is so that you're not bugging a neighbor, and if that's not something that's happening right now...
Yeah, if somebody's got five acres.
So, for instance, currently, right now, in the R43 district, it says, "No building used for animals shall be constructed within 200 feet of any property line." That's pretty substantial. And that at least 5,000 square feet of fenced area shall be provided for each animal. And no poultry or livestock shall be maintained within 100 feet of a property line of any adjoining street or residential zoning lot. So I mean, these are actually pretty strict.
You have to be 100 feet away with this ordinance that staff has brought us today.
This is what exists for the, those larger lots now.
But if you've got five acres, that's not an impossibility to meet that. I do have another question. What happens with like the zones? Because I pulled up a zoning map. So, what are, what would be the requirement for like GR2 or GR4? And like Laura, R1, which is not on our, well, R1 is on there, it's as 10,000 to 11,999. So R1 and R10 would be at three, from what the city had proposed. But what are the GR4, GR5? Where would they fit into all of this? Because they're on the zoning map.
To be honest, I can't answer that question. I didn't prepare the ordinance, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But that is a good question.
Well, the ordinance you have in your packet is what kind of the planning commission recommended, is the one that was given to you all. The, and I want to say the original one that went to the planning commission too did not have the permit in it, but the planning commission said if we do it, do a permit. So staff didn't, staff originally did not recommend a permit, but then the planning commission said permit.
Well, and I know going with this is going, you know, against what the planning commission suggested. And there is part of me that does like a permit, just because, again, I want to support our staff and if code enforcement, that there's an issue, I want them to be able to find out what that issue is. And if we're worried about so many people having chickens all of the sudden, you know, we can make sure that it's regulated.
I agree with you, Laura.
Councilman Johnson?
If you're going to try to regulate it, you've got to have a permit. Otherwise, how does code enforcement do anything?
Well, it would be the, it would be the language that allows them to enter the property to inspect if there's a complaint.
Yes.
Only if there's a complaint.
Only if there's a complaint.
Yeah, and they would still have, even if there's no permit, they still, whatever the language of the ordinance says, they can enforce, even if they, even if it's not a permit.
They're going to run around and count the chickens.
Before they hatch.
Yeah.
And can we make that permit free? Like, we don't want to place a burden, but, you know, I just want to make sure that they have the permission by the property owner to...
That, I think that's at your discretion, so...
I don't think that there needs to be a cost. There's not a cost with owning other animals. I don't think there should necessarily be a cost associated with this. But I just think if we have it, an ordinance, it needs to be able to be enforced.
Yeah, that's in the ordinance, and enforcement is possible in the ordinance, the way it's written, even if there's no permitting required.
But not to enter a private property.
Yeah, actually.
What was that question? I'm sorry.
The question is enforcement. What if, you know, how do we enforce, how does code enforcement address a complaint of noise or smell? Do they have the right to come on someone's property and say, oh, well, I see 25 chickens, and you're only on a half an acre, that's too many?
If, yeah.
If they can see them from the right-of-way, then they can see them.
But this is all backyard.
Otherwise, it's typical criminal law. You have to either have the approval or consent of the owner to enter the property, or you need to get a search warrant.
And that's the case, whether or not we have a permitting process.
Exactly.
Yeah. I don't think, I got to say, I don't think we need a permitting process. And when I see this comparison of all the jurisdictions, I think out of, one, two, three, four, five, six, out of eight of them, only one, City of Swanee requires a permit. I would say we wouldn't. Does anyone agree with me on that?
I can be convinced of it, because I think that honestly, if we have an issue with this, this is an ordinance that's pretty easily changed.
Easily what?
Easily changed. This can come, if code enforcement is like, you guys did this, and this is getting out of hand, and this is what we need, even though this is what we suggested, then I think that this is something we can try out and change it.
All right, what would you like, what do you want? Mr. Distottia, we haven't heard from you yet.
I would like to go with the ordinance, with the permit. What the planning commission recommended was to have an ordinance. I have a permit in the ordinance, so I would vote to have a permit, notwithstanding what Laura's comments are. They're good comments, but I think if you're going to try to enforce something, you've got to have the document to enforce it, which is a permit.
Can I speak to the cost again? So, this would be under an accessory structure permit, which already has a fee, so I don't think we can do it without a fee.
Can you, what is that fee?
It's, how do we do fees now, based on the, is it?
It's under the structure.
It's still based on the new fee structure, it's based on square feet, isn't that right, versus value?
So you're permitting the structure as opposed to a-
That was my understanding.
License or a permit to actually have chickens on your property?
That was my understanding, although I noticed that it reads a little differently.
The way, the way it reads GA right now is, "A permit from the city to keep backyard chickens is required," whether you have a structure or not.
Except that G is coops and enclosed runs. What we're allowing, it's in the accessory structure section, or accessory uses, I'm sorry. Coops and enclosed runs for female pullet or hens.
I don't think we need to permit their structure. I think you just need to permit the fact that they're having chickens.
We already have the permit required for a structure, that's the issue. What Laura's saying is, we already require, if you're going to build a structure in your backyard and attach it to the ground, you have to get a permit.
But you just show us pictures where they can move them.
Yeah, well, that would not require a permit if you get a chicken tractor.
I think, I think that if you took this clause out that says, "A permit from the city to keep backyard chickens is required," then the coop wouldn't necessarily require a permit unless we specify it does.
Okay.
I would take it out. Anybody else?
I would take it out.
Take it out.
I have a question for Councilman Johnson.
Before we go on, would anybody else take out that clause, as Laura just read? You want to, we have three so far, you want to weigh in on it? Take it out?
I'm fine, I'm fine with it, yep. Councilwoman Johnson, you, I was listening to you very intently to understand where you sat on this, and if I understand right, you like the one that the city has put out, as opposed to the one that the recommendation of the planning commission. Is that what my, I feel is a compromise that you put out there?
Yes.
Okay. I can support that, but I do like the idea that we, I mean, I love that planning commission, they really do an excellent job in thoroughly thrashing every issue. But I think in this particular one, we do need to at least look at what our citizens want us to do. And I think the mayor's right, we should allow them to have chickens, but we should put some restrictions on it. And I think this restriction from our city staff is a pretty good pass at that.
You're saying the chart that's on the screen right now?
Yeah, the chart that's on the screen right now.
Can I make it clearer? Can I make a clarification?
Which is that compromise between what the, what the commission wanted and what, what we're talking about.
I would go with that.
I just want to make a clarification about the, um, the zoning. I think, I think the zoning districts are included on the chart, just to give you an idea how the recommendation of the square footage is somewhat aligned with our districts. But if you look at the ordinance in the packet, it, it doesn't tie it to the zoning district. It's strictly square footage. So for instance, P, I guess it's Q, Q. QD says the minimum lot size for keeping backyards chickens is forty-three thousand square feet. So if you want it to resemble the chart more, we would just include more square footages in that.
Well, if I can't have the chart that I proposed, I'll go with the one that was originally proposed to the planning commission, which is the one that's on the screen right now.
Okay.
Correct.
So, I mean, I would like to break it down to more like grade, graded levels as it increases, but.
Can we just eliminate the zonings and just do square footage? Would that make a little more sense?
She's saying that that's actually how it works.
It's gonna be in the, that's how it's gonna be in the ordinance.
The parentheses on the chart, I think, are more just to give you all reference.
Okay.
The way it's written would be the, the numbers.
Square footage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything in this current ordinance, if you don't mind, Mayor, I have a question.
By all means.
That would prohibit this in a multifamily scenario, townhouse, condominium?
Good point.
Well, in a lot of those cases, they don't own any land outside of the walls. I, I'm not sure, the ones that I've come across recently, different townhouses, they don't own any land outside of their four walls. There might be some situations in the city that do, but I don't think they're, they're not gonna have enough square footage.
I just, I'm trying to avoid the, unfortunately, when you're a lawyer, you think about the worst-case scenarios and the loopholes. So I would like some sort of an explicit statement in here that said, if these are the dwellings we're talking about, that they not be permitted. Because I could see that being a problem, because typically, they don't have much outside.
So restricted to single-family residential?
Yeah.
Single-family residential, restricted statements.
Well, I see, so this is accessorated dwellings.
But even a single-family residential, I mean, a townhouses.
Yeah, but they're not zoned.
I was gonna say.
They're not gonna have the square footage necessary for this. Because I actually looked at some of the properties with Q Public Net, and a lot of those neighborhoods that are really clustered together, they don't meet the ten thousand.
I don't think so.
They don't even come close.
Right, but, and as long as we have the ten thousand minimum, then I'm okay with it. But there was some talk earlier about perhaps allowing them in less than ten thousand. I just want to be on guard if we get there, to make sure we don't have that problem.
Well, let me play devil's advocate. What if the community of the multifamily wanted, they had some open space that they, that they wanted to have chickens as a community?
Yeah.
That would, yeah.
So.
If you have a community chicken.
I think an explicit statement would be good.
That's fine.
Madam Mayor, can we get maybe the, our attorney to just put the proper wordage together for us?
Yeah, yeah, Justin, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Council, what do you want? Laura, you want this?
I, I am good with this.
Suzanne?
I'll settle for this.
Frank?
I'm good with this. I just want to make sure we're not talking about any permits.
Correct, no permits.
So no permit in that chart is based, and, and per Ted, probably a regulation on no single fam, or that has to be single family, yeah.
A provision on all time.
I got it.
Mister, uh, Mister Holland?
I think it's a great compromise. I'm sorry to the planning board, but I think this is probably where we should go.
So if I can just clarify, chart as is, obviously, no zoning districts, just the square footages, no permit, and some kind of clause for the multifamily. But you're good with everything else, the setback requirements and.
Yeah.
The size for the minimum square footage size for coops and runs and all that, okay?
No concerns.
No single-family residents?
No multifamily.
No, 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 multi. It has to be single family.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, and keep in mind that the regulation with regard to like the twenty-foot from the property line, that's going to restrict somebody who's got a really small backyard anyway. So, because you're just not gonna, you know, that alone, especially like some of the inverted pie-shaped lots are probably not gonna be happy with it.
We'll see what happens.
This is gonna be a challenge for your code enforcement.
Yes, it is.
I think that's what we were trying to avoid, but I don't, I mean, you all are closer to the public. I don't, we, you know, downstairs, don't get a lot of inquiries about this. So I don't know if we anticipated, I don't know, unless it stirs up a lot of excitement, it might, but.
Well, from a personal aspect, I can tell you that I researched this before I bought a house here, and I almost moved to Sanoy because you don't allow chickens. So.
All right, do you have everything that you need? Justin, do you have what you need?
Yep.
All right, we'll move forward on that, thanks very much.
Can I ask one other question, Chris? Can we allow domestic ducks?
No.
No. Why not? What do you have against a good old duck?
Planning commission.
They can't fly. They can't fly. They don't make a lot of noise.
How do you know they don't fly?
They're domestic ducks. They don't fly. Domestic ducks?
Different kind, I guess.
Yeah, apparently. Those are not domestic ducks. Domestic ducks are too heavy. It's like turkeys. You know, domestic turkeys are so fat and their wings are too small, they can't fly either. And even wild turkeys can hardly fly.
Let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good. We have a good ordinance and we are ready to move forward. Anybody else?
Ducks.
Laura? I would say, let's start with this.
All right, thank you very much.
No domestic ducks.
Work session discussion items, item N, Wicker Hill Land Lease Agreement, Ted Meeker.
Verizon noted an area of coverage that was lacking in the city. Once that analysis was done, they identified a city parcel, the BMX facility, as a potential location for a cell tower. Discussions ensued between Verizon, city staff, and the city's consultant for cell-related activities. Out of that came a proposed lease agreement, and that is what is going to be before you at the next meeting. We have, did we have a, I think we have a copy of the lease in there. If not, we will have that obviously at the next meeting.
It's there.
The one sort of loose end that's been floating around that I think staff has tried to resolve, there was some discussion of a co-location of facilities for the nine-one-one system. I can tell you that Verizon and David Kirk, their attorneys, or the attorney representing Verizon is here this morning. It's not been a lack of willingness on Verizon's part. What they needed to know was the size of the equipment that would go on the tower, and the area needed at the base of the tower for the related equipment to go. Because obviously, with each antenna that goes on one of these towers, you have to have some equipment down at the base. Staff has reached out on several instances to Fayette County nine-one-one to get that information. There's, I don't know that there's been a ton of interest, or at least current interest, from Fayette County. So we're left sort of in this quandary of trying to protect them, but not having enough information to write it into the lease. What we do have is a firm commitment from Verizon that when the time comes, we're ready to do it, to amend this lease agreement. There's a willingness to do so, which, I mean, again, they're ready, if we have the specs, they'd include that in the lease that's gonna come before council. But try as we might. Staff's consensus was, and that was unanimous consensus, was to go ahead and move forward with the lease we have now. And if and when the time comes that nine-one-one wants to co-locate, we'll go back to Verizon and try to do so.
Ted, my question, you know, I was trying to get.
Can you get on the microphone, Paul?
Yeah. Is this not on?
It's on. Yeah.
Yeah, we were texting back and forth about this, like nine, ten o'clock last night. But, you know, my concern was that is there any way, without having these specific technical specifications, that we can ensure, you know, before going to an amendment, that they will agree at some point in the future to allow some equipment, even if it's the city's? It's not beyond the realm of the possibility that going forward, that our own public safety may want equipment up there themselves, whether the county nine-one-one does it or not. And is there some way legally to word something that they would agree at a future time if we came back asking for amendment? Within a, a realm of specifications, you know, that's, I don't know, acceptable within the industry? Or even though it doesn't give you something exact technical specifications, you know, within a range to preserve some space on the tower, you know, for a city or county use in the future? And I don't know if that's doable without having those technical specs.
I think, I'm always hesitant to write in provisions into a contract that says we're going to agree to something in the future. If we have the specs now that we can write into the lease, you're sort of capped at that. So if you say X amount, I'm just gonna use a very loose thing, ten feet, then you can't go to twelve. You've agreed to ten, and they're going to co-locate other antennas and other facilities on that tower. So then if we come back and try to do something different, it can be problematic.
On the other hand, if we come back and try to do anything at all, they could completely reject an amendment. So not, not agree to an amendment. So we'll have something in there to hold them to something rather than nothing. That's, that's all I was getting at, and I don't know if it's doable legally or not.
If we have language to propose prior to this being voted on on the twenty-first, then we can propose that language to Verizon. It's not a lack of willingness on Verizon's part. They just need to have some idea of what they're doing.
Right.
And that's where we.
Yeah, you're right, I agree too. If there's no way to do that, you know, legally.
Is the co-location profitable?
Oh, yeah.
I'm curious to know about co-location, not just for emergency services, but for other companies. They co-locate routinely, correct?
So the lease allows not only a base amount, you know, for the land lease, about, I think, thirty-two thousand a year, but we also, and it's similar to what we did with the tower on Rockaway Road, for any of the sub, you know, lease tenants that they have on there that have equipment, the city will get, I think it's thirty percent of the revenue stream from it.
Yeah.
So now for anything that we would have equipment for, obviously, you know, that you wouldn't get a, um, a share of that because, you know, we're taking up that space instead of a tenant. But we would get the advantage of a reduced rent amount than what these other tenants would pay, from what I understand. So that would, that would be the advantage there, that we'd be, you know, have a price advantage for putting our equipment on there.
If there are some proposed specs, minimum specs that are submitted, that we can write into this lease agreement, I'll be glad to submit them to Verizon, and I don't think you're gonna get a lot of pushback on that issue. But right now, agreeing to agree to something in the future, I just don't want to write, I, I don't know how enforceable that language would be anyway.
Right, and it would have to be on short order, because I agree, like everyone else, let's, you know, time is money, so it's not hold it up.
Okay. Last thing I'll add is, and I said this to council previously, the proposed tower is at least five hundred feet away from any residential structure. So it's well-isolated. It is going to be monopine, I think is the technical term. So it's going to be a tower that looks like a tree.
Thank you for that. I was gonna ask you a question about that.
I had, I gotta admit.
You should see it in your packet.
It's in the packet.
I, I can see that there's a layout diagram in here that I could not make heads or tails of. Is that something you can put up or no?
I don't think we have it up.
So just, I just don't, I just want to know where it's gonna be. If I'm walking on the, and I've got BMX track on my right, and I'm walking toward the recreation building in the C V B, where will I see that monopine?
I couldn't find it either.
Oh, this is really fuzzy.
Exactly.
By the way, we use Verizon service in all our public safety vehicles, so I know they'll be happy to see this going in place and improve their communication abilities.
I would think it's reasonable to assume that they will co-locate with other companies as well. We have the entire packet.
Yeah, the drawing is a good, Kim, we will have, Mayor, we will have a good color drawing when this is before the council on the twenty-first that shows you exactly where the location is on the site.
Thanks very much, I'm not getting it from what I see here, sorry.
Yeah.
I can't find it either.
We'll have a better drawing.
Okay. Council, questions or concerns?
You said it was how far away from any structure?
Five hundred.
At least five hundred. I think the drawing we had, base, was five hundred and twenty-one is the number that sticks in my head? But it's at least five hundred, I know that much.
Okay. Two or three years ago, when we put the one across from Huddleston Middle School, by the church or whatever it was over there, it's a, it looks like a pine tree.
Yes.
We got a lot of emails, people concerned about five G. This isn't gonna be five G, I assume? It is.
I know where it's gonna be, based on this.
I have no idea. Is it, David, is it gonna be five G or?
Yeah. Don't need anymore. Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council David Kirk, with Troutman, Pepper, Hamilton, Sanders, representing Verizon. I would assume it, it will have five G capability. I don't know specifically if, if it will be, but I would assume it would have. I can certainly find that out.
And if I'm not mistaken, federal law prohibits us from declining a cell tower based on health concerns, is that true?
I can't give you legal advice, your, your city attorney can do that, but that's my understanding.
Oh, funny.
You're correct.
Yeah. Just checking.
But ultimately, this isn't a conditional use permit where you're applying for something on a private property. This is the city's property, so it seems unnecessary for the city to put itself through a conditional use permit process.
Got it, got it.
But yes, if it was a private property owner, health concerns are a factor that Congress has said a city or county cannot consider when looking at cell towers and permits for cell towers.
Thank you. Justin, what do you want to tell me?
Thank you.
He's got the.
He's bringing it up on the screen.
I see that.
Based on what I can see on that map, it's gonna be right in here.
Where's Flat Creek Boardwalk?
Down here.
Down here?
Yep.
So it's up by the Fred? Is that the Fred?
They're, they're going to use the, the access from the C V B down to the dog park. And they'll have an easement to be able to get down here, down this path of the dog park.
Okay.
And it'll be access from the asphalt off of the dog park.
Oh.
Right in here.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps. Council, questions?
Oh, you answered my questions, thank you.
All right.
All set.
Perfect, thank you very much. New agenda item, A, film location agreement. Can you, can you hold for two minutes? We're just gonna take a two-minute break, absolutely.
I can't tell how many emails we got about that. I can't tell you how many emails we got about that.
And we're back, thanks very much.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
My name is Harold Layton, I'm the Assistant Recreation and Special Events Director. It's the first time I've been making any kind of presentation, so I wanted to introduce myself. I'm here today seeking approval for the film location agreement. We have had several film permits come through the past couple of weeks that have been needing some documentation, some agreements, that we've had to submit to Ted several times, to our attorney. And we're trying to clean that process up so that this would ultimately give us the city a document that we could also include in our film permitting process that would be available to be signed by the city manager, that we could then move on the agreement with the film permits. A lot of these permits are requiring, you know, quick rush times, you know, fewer than 10 days. So we're trying to get the set meetings approved as quickly as possible. We're currently in the process with one of these right now, that we need approval right now, that this will actually be shot before the next council meeting, that's why we're seeking approval today.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Do you need a motion?
We're gonna vote on this today so they can get started.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda item A, film location agreement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any last questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What are your fees, you got fees in here?
So we have several fees. You know, the production that we're looking at right now is actually a high-impact facility. We're actually gonna be closing a facility for a set amount of days for this production. That has a dollar amount, you know, that's, it's very, it's good for what we're doing. Do you want, do you want the number, I guess, I'm assuming?
Well, I've heard people complaining about not being able to get around and stuff like that, so there's gonna be a fee for what they're, the film committee, film people come in and block things off. So do we know what those fees are gonna be?
Correct, yes, sir, we do. We have, depending on what kind of impact they are on the citizens in the city, we have a low-impact fee which allows a park or a complex to stay open, or a city facility to stay open to the public, which that's in our permitting instructions, that's $4,000 a day is what the number is. And that's for a low-impact fee. You know, anytime staff has to make a site visit, there's an hourly rate for that. There's a high-impact, or application fee for a high-impact film of $350. They have a damage deposit of $1,000. I mean, there's a list that's in the permit packet that we currently have.
That was, that was when we did the film ordinance last year?
Two years.
Two years ago? All the fees were included in that ordinance and approved by council.
And that hasn't changed?
Has not changed.
Madam Mayor, can I make a comment? I agree that we need to maybe look at our fees, and I don't know that's germane for today's discussion. So if I wouldn't, wouldn't mind having that come up at another time to have them, have us all look at the fees involved. At least that doesn't interrupt what we wanna do today, which is the film location agreement.
Correct.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you. All agenda items, A, 102404, ordinance 1229 zoning text amendment to create a short-term rental permit, Justin?
I've got a presentation for this one. I'm filling in for Robin with this one. Okay. Well, was there a title? Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and click past that. So I took Robin's presentation from two, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, updated it. You see the list got a little longer now, we're on, we're down to November 7th of this process. You all made a couple of changes at the public hearing during the last meeting, so we took that, because they were a good amount of changes, we took that, we wrote it into the ordinance. You should have a copy of that in your packets to show, based on what you decided last time, how that reflects in the language of what the ordinance would look like. I'm just gonna hit some of the high points here, is with the permit required, you added, you changed it to a two-year permit instead of a one-year permit. Everything else stayed the same on this slide from the last meeting. You allowed for multiple contact persons instead of just one. And also that in the mailer that we would send out to properties within 200 feet, we took out the requirement to include the information of the local contact person. We still send a mailer out, though, that there is a property within 200 feet. On this slide, you took out the STR, the parking off-street on paved surface, you made it just the same as any other property in the city, and same with the garbage. So you took out those two provisions. And then the guest registry did remain, but the biggest change was the way it was written before, it was required to be kept for three years, it took it down to 30 days. Still has the vehicle tag information on there, name of occupant, date of stay, and home of the city, the primary residence of the occupant. And then the last thing that was really, the big change was, was the enactment date would be January 1st, and all current SDRs would have till March 1st to submit for their application for the permit, and I think that's it.
All right, thanks to our staff for amazing, amazing hard work, and thanks to our planning commission for all their hard work. Council, can I get a motion?
I make a motion, accepted as written.
Approved.
I make a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any last comments?
Yes. While we are close to approving this ordinance, I wanna express my deep concern about the financial damage that could result in if any one neighborhood is inundated with short-term rentals. I wanna acknowledge that a home is often the largest investment an individual or a young family will make. If we approve this ordinance for the 135 short-term rentals, and we only have 70 or 80 short-term rentals currently in operation, then we could have as many as 50 new applicants coming forward for short-term rental permits. That means that a new short-term rental, or two, or three, could be coming to your neighborhood. But please don't think that HOA covenants alone will protect a neighborhood. If, if an HOA has a limit of 10% of the houses that can be rentals, and there are no rentals in place, then they too could be targeted. A non-HOA neighborhood is also just that much more vulnerable because there's no cap to the number of rentals. I do believe that limiting the number in each and every neighborhood, whether it's an HOA or not, is the appropriate thing to do. Our citizens expect us to protect them, and like it or not, a short-term rental is a motel, and as such, is not supposed to exist in a residential-zoned neighborhood. We are seeing some cities reversing their lax short-term rental policies, and either making their regulations stronger or completely banning short-term rentals. If we adopt a short-term rental ordinance, knowing that non-HOA neighborhoods are not protected, and we have the ability to protect them, and the technology is there to map and track the short-term rental locations, and to limit how many are in any one neighborhood, if we fail to do that, or refuse to do that, I believe it's negligent on our part because at this exact time, we can and should protect our citizens and their largest investment, which is their home. So my fellow council members, I think we must consider the rights of homeowners who purchased a home in a single-family neighborhood that's residential, and we must limit the number of short-term rentals in any one neighborhood, whether it's an HOA or not. It's something I truly believe that we need to do. We can make an exception to the group of short-term rental operators who are going to be given the opportunity to apply first because they've been in operation, and allow more than whatever limit we establish in that, those neighborhoods. But I think we really need to include a clause in the ordinance that no more than 1% of the houses in any neighborhood, as defined by the cities just mapped, where they've got it mapped out, Justin and I have talked about this, that they already have it divided up as neighborhoods. So we should limit it, how many are in any one neighborhood. I think this issue is extremely important, it's very important to me, but it's more important to every homeowner. And as our city manager has stated, this is something, they already have the technology in place to monitor and control, so there's no good reason for us to not protect our citizens. So I'd like to propose that we make one final change to establish that we limit how many short-term rentals are in any one neighborhood to 1% of the houses in that neighborhood.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
We have a discussion, I believe.
I'm calling a vote. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Not on the, not on the neighborhoods, all in favor of your motion to approve.
Can I get some clarification on what we're voting on?
Frank made a motion that we approve the short-term rental ordinance as written.
As written.
Correct. We've, we've.
But we had, we had an amendment that was made.
It's, we did not have an amendment that was made, we had a comment that was made and shared. It's the same comment that's already been shared three times, we've covered it. We're, we're beating a dead horse. Respectfully, Mr. Holland, I understand that we've had several comments, several meetings, that's why we've been at this for two and a half years, about dividing up, carving up the different neighborhoods. It has not been supported by Mr. Distadio or myself. So therefore, the, the motion is to approve, not accept, the motion is to approve the short-term rental ordinance as written. He said aye, I said aye, sir.
Aye.
Thank you, all opposed?
No.
Motion carries 3-1, thank you very much. Council staff topics, I have one, this is a little tangential, but I'm kind of excited about it. I had a, you ready? I had a long talk with my pastor, and I had a long talk with our chaplain, our city chaplain, through the fire department. And I would like to bring in, I, I would like to bring in our city chaplain to lead anyone who's interested in prayer prior to our meetings. And this would be here, for anyone who is interested, as I am, and anyone who doesn't care to participate, they certainly don't have to, and there's no pressure. I've always felt that there should be a way for people who wish to pray before our meetings to pray before our meetings. And I would suggest that we take our chaplain, bring him in, and 10 or 15 minutes before the meeting, once we all get settled, if anybody wishes to participate, then we would be able to have him lead us in prayer, so.
He would lead the council?
Yes, as you wish.
So the expectation is we're settled 15 minutes before our meeting starts?
Or 10, whatever works for you.
I don't like the idea at all. I don't like the idea, I think we need to have an invocation, I think it needs to be a part of our meeting. I think it needs to be led by a member on this council. I think that there's no reason why we can't do an invocation and have it be on camera. Every other commission and board around the county, Fayetteville, the Fayette County Commissioners, Tyrone Town Council, Noonan, they all do an invocation at the beginning of their meeting. I've proposed this in the past. I don't believe we need to have the chaplain come in. I don't think it should be done like as a 10 or 15-minute thing prior to the meeting. I think it should be done where a council member says an invocation, and then leads the pledge of allegiance, just like all of the other councils and boards around here in Coeida County. And I'd be very much in favor of an invocation led by a council member.
I believe that being elected civic leaders does not make me a religious leader. I'm very humble in that regard. The words we speak on the dais are official speech spoken in our official capacity as elected representatives of all of our citizens. Prayer is not a part of our official duties. I feel personally leaning toward prayer, but again, as I've always thought, if we want to have prayer before our meetings, there's no reason why we can't have prayer before our meetings. Having a city council of five people, all with a certain religious persuasion, might discourage people who come to council meetings simply for secular or conducting, or to conduct city business. Most references to prayer in the Old and New Testaments are very, very private moments. It's intended to be, prayer is intended to be in private. I like our moment of silence, I think it's inclusive, it allows everybody of all beliefs, it's not offensive to anyone. I think it's very, very reasonable, but I think there are some people who wish to pray before our meetings. And the minute we introduce prayer into our council meetings, the questions begin, you know, whose prayer? Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Baha'i? Who should lead the prayer, and who gets to decide? So to have our chaplain come in 10 minutes before and offer it as an option to everyone, I think will give us all an opportunity to pray and find peace.
I, I think that that's a far-fetched thing, that it's gonna become a problem when the Tyrone Town Council, the Fayetteville City Council, the Fayette County Commissioners, the Noonan City Council, all have an invocation, which is not a full prayer in detail. It can be a matter of choice, and it could be, Madam Mayor, when it's your chance to, to do the invocation, that you could do it as a moment of silence, if that's what you so choose. And I think that by doing it, I think, trying to create a situation or saying that it's gonna open a can of worms, I think that that's wrong. I think all these other boards and commissions are doing it, and nobody's complaining.
Council?
I am in favor of having a prayer, I've told you that before.
Prayer or invocation, Frank?
I just said prayer. Inlocation is fine, but I have been in a situation where the chairman of this particular committee opened it up, and we went from a Catholic prayer to a Jewish prayer to a Muslim prayer, and it got pretty difficult. And then when the individual came in and rolled out his rug and started to go through whatever he was gonna go through, it was stopped, and we decided not to do that anymore. So I think that by having prayer, we better decide what we're gonna be allowed, which I probably don't think the attorney's gonna say we can do, but we need to be careful of opening it up to anybody to do whatever they wanna do. I would, I like the idea of the chaplain leading us, so that it's not, you know, it's not denomination. He's a, he's a chaplain. We do that in military all the time, every time we deploy, whether we're in a tent or out in open field, we have a chaplain that will lead us in a prayer. So I like the idea of the chaplain.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, so this has been on my mind a lot, I feel like last time this came up, there was quite a contentious spirit. And so my hopes in this coming back up is that we can have a better discussion about it, for one. I think the best thing that we can give to our community, and not to say that there isn't room for healthy debate on this dais, but is to have a council that can have healthy debate without being contentious and to be respectful of each other's feelings. I think by putting each council member in a position where they are made to pray, I don't agree with that. I don't, I think there's people on this dais currently that do not feel comfortable with that, and I think that it's important to be respectful of that. That being said, I am a person of prayer, and I like the idea of having an invocation. When I've been at meetings and I've spoken with other people from different communities about this, we've discussed how it's done in other places. And so when I spoke to someone and they said that they had their chaplain came in, that really resonated with me. To have someone that already serves in this capacity under the umbrella of our government, I think it works, I think it's a, I think it's a great solution. Frank spoke, or, sorry, Councilwoman Distadio spoke of having different religions come in, and I, and I can see. in, and I, and I can see that that could be a problem. I feel, I think in the past, we've had an invocation, and now we don't anymore, and where I don't know the history of that, I would assume that there is, there was a problem or something happened with it. Now, as far as it being before our meeting or afterwards, honestly, I don't care. I don't care. I feel like since I've been on the council, there have been times when I have wished we would have something like this in place, where we could come together as a community. We've had a school shooting in our state. We've had a catastrophic hurricane in our state. And so, to have someone that can come in, that can bring words of comfort in a unifying manner, that's what's important to me. So, I would love to have a chaplain. I'm fine with it before. I'm fine with it after, whatever that looks like. I'm fine either way, but I think that this is a, a good way that we can move forward on this.
It might be a little on the impractical side to have it off after, to have him scheduled to be here and wait until our meeting's over. It might be-
No, no, I mean after we start.
Oh.
I would like to make one other comment.
Can I get from Councilmember Holland, and then we'll come back?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman Johnson. I think it should be an invocation, and not prayer. An invocation typically is one or two sentences asking for the blessing of the Almighty. And the case of doing it on the dais here, before the call of the meeting, and before it's called the order by the mayor, I think is an appropriate thing to do. So, you're only talking about having a short period of time for the invocation. As far as-
Is it an appropriate time or an inappropriate?
No. An appropriate time.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. An appropriate time. Before the call to order of the meeting, have it at that point. So, you're talking, what, maybe a minute, maybe before you have the invocation? I do like the idea of having it done. I, I would have liked to have done it myself. I'm a man of prayer, so I like to do it, but I do understand what I'm hearing from the council here, that this could be done easily by a chaplain. Now, I understand that we have two chaplains in, in our city. If I'm correct, I may ask the-
If I may.
Yeah, if I may.
We have chaplain George Dillard. Dr. Dillard is chaplain through the fire department, to my understanding.
Right.
And we have two chaplains through the police department.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
However, one is Kim Holloway, and she is focused on Piedmont Fayette Hospital.
Okay.
And the other one is Kenneth Coontz, who's focused, I haven't seen him in a long time, but his focus when he was here was on veterans and suicide prevention.
Okay.
So, not that he wouldn't come in if asked, but highly focused, and I think, I think the man on the scene really is, Dr. Dillard, would be willing to avail himself.
I, I knew that. I did not know those are the names, so I appreciate that. And the assistant chief, those, those are the names you're using, and do you use them regularly for invocations and prayer at the police department?
That's not really what we use chaplains for. We don't have occasion for that. If we do, it would be one of our chaplains, but we use them mostly for incidents where there have been a death, or somebody, or a murder, or somebody, somebody to take that role, or somebody to do the events, or occasionally with our officers. That's how we work.
Okay, I can, I, thank you very much for that. I, before I make a final statement, I'd like to ask the attorney a question. We heard Councilman DiStadio talk about having everybody in there, every different type of religion coming in. I believe that there was a legal case on that, that maybe you can opine on, that said, whatever the person is in, whether, whatever faith it is that we chose to come in, that's the extent of what we're going to be doing. There are not going to be rotating religions through our, our, our meetings to appease everyone, which is calling on the Almighty for His blessing.
I'm going to have to go back and look. I know there was a case in 2011, I think it was, from the Supreme Court.
Correct.
I haven't looked at it in a while, so I'm not just going to off-the-cuff give you an answer to that.
I appreciate that.
If I could read that, I'll be glad to email council.
Thank you, because I did hear the same thing from someone else of legal persuasion, so, that we need to look at that to make sure that we don't have to worry about having every religion come through our facility. So, if just one person gets up and asks the Almighty for a blessing, end of story. I do have the last statement. I have to agree with Council, Councilmember Johnson, that I think invocation is the right way instead of prayer, and I know that there's only a slight difference between those two, Madam Mayor, but I do believe an invocation would be a little bit quicker and a little bit easier, and it's going to be generic in place, as opposed to, you know, saying the Our Father, or saying whatever you want to say as far as a prayer. So, those would be my comments on that, Madam Mayor.
We'll plan on that prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you have to move that up to the chaplain.
Okay, we can do that, too.
Hey, sometimes they start with a statement and end with a short prayer.
That'll be fine. I can live with that. I, I just didn't want to make it, you know, I didn't want to make it a 10-minute discussion before the start.
No service.
And I, I've had those before, where some preachers do get up, and they're off and running. And I love it, but I don't think it's appropriate for us here. I think we want a little invocation to ask the Almighty to come down and guide us in our wisdom to make good decisions for the city.
Amen.
Thank you. Any last comments?
Yes. I would like to point out that according to our ordinances, if you wanted to bring this up during Council Staff Topics to place it on a future agenda, that would be the way that it would have to be done, but you do not bring it up during Council Staff Topics and push a motion to put something through.
I'm not asking for a motion.
There hasn't been a motion.
Noted. So noted.
Do we have a consensus?
But it would be a motion to put it on a future agenda.
Yeah.
If we were to make a motion today.
Consensus.
Do we have a consensus?
Sure.
Yeah, right now, it's just a topic.
To be honest with you-
We've been asking you all to make a motion if you want it on a future agenda.
Well-
That way, we're not trying to read tea leaves as to what the consensus was.
To be honest with you, this is not relative to how the sequence of events goes in our meetings. It would be something we decide and take care of prior to the meeting. So, I'm not sure that we need to have a motion. I believe I have consensus from at least four of us, that prior to the meeting, we'll have our chaplain come in, and we'll just take it from there. I'm not sure that calls for a motion of any kind.
I think if a chaplain's going to show up, and people are going to congregate in front of the dais, and it's not part of the official meeting, then I'm not really worried about, I mean, people are free to talk to friends before a meeting.
Exactly. So, we'll leave it at that.
I'm more interested in what's the process for how the meeting will be conducted when you bang the gavel and start the meeting.
Correct.
Got it.
This would be, my suggestion was having it just before we call the meeting to order. Is that what I?
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone?
I think so.
And we do it right here in the dais? You can go ahead and say, preacher, go ahead and do your invocation.
Sure, but it's before we call to-
Before you put that gavel down.
Thank you for that.
Okay?
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
This is, we're just talking about, we have two different types of meetings that we have up here, so are we talking about just council meetings, like the city council meetings?
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
I see no reason why we can't do it in any meeting. That's just my opinion now. I don't, I, you know, whether it's even a meeting like this one here.
Work sessions.
Work sessions and those kinds of things, I would see no reason why you couldn't have that moment of silence, an invocation, a prayer, whatever, just before the gavel comes down.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Just as soon as we get settled.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
You're fine?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we clarified that.
Good.
All right. Do we have any other council staff topics?
If no one else?
Sir.
I just want to remind everyone that we've got the Veterans Day coming up next, is it next Wednesday?
Monday.
Monday, next Monday, sorry. Thank you for the clarification. It's going to be here at city, at city hall, at the flagpole, both the VFW, our local 9949 post, and also American Legion Post 50 will be here to do a ceremony for the veterans. So, it's going to be at noon time, is that correct? Yeah, it's going to be at noon time, so I encourage everybody listening to this meeting, come and join us on Veterans Day to honor the veterans. We have a lot of them here in this city, a lot, more than you suspect that are veterans, so please come and join us.
Any others?
I would like to ask a question. Why is it at the work sessions, we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I know. What do you want to do?
Yeah, we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because most of, whenever we've done work sessions, we haven't really done, we've just gone into business, right? So, we can discuss.
Is that what you-